We would like to call this meeting of the City of Kingman, City Council, to order at five o'clock on Tuesday, January 4th. And we'd like to ask for the City Court to do a little...
Mayor Miles?
Present.
Vice Mayor Watkins?
Here.
Councilmember Mellow is excused this evening. Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Councilmember Samley?
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley? And Councilmember Walker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Annie. And we would like to recognize that the mayor is participating via Zoom and she has asked me to conduct this meeting. We will have an invocation given by Pastor Peter Ernst of the Family Bible Church. We invite everybody to stand and then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shall we pray? Father God, we're thankful today for the new year that you've given to us. We're thankful that you are the sovereign God over all things. We ask, Lord, for your wisdom tonight as decisions are made for the people of Kingman. We pray your protection upon our mayor and upon our city council, upon our fire department, the police department, and those that lead us, those that protect us. Father, we're thankful for this constitutional republic that we get to live under. And Father, we thank you for the pledge that says, "Under God." Lord, help us to understand that, to acknowledge that, and to bow before you as the high King of Heaven. Bless this meeting, we pray. Give wisdom to the deliberations and we'll pray your blessing now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, we'd like to thank all those who are here in council chambers as visitors. Our first item, well, I should follow the agenda here. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Our first item is called to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that are advertised for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. And Clerk Annie, do we have anything tonight?
Vice Mayor, we did not have anybody registered to join us via Zoom, nor did we receive any written comments, and no one in chambers has signed up to speak this evening.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is our consent agenda, item number two. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items A through I. Councilmembers, are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Hearing none, we need a motion for approving the consent agenda, items A through I.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We have item number three, old business, we have none. Item number four, new business, we have none. Number five, department reports, Kingman Crossing update. Manager Foggan, I think this is your time.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, appreciate that. Mayor, council, it's a pleasure to welcome you to a new year, and we are happy to be kicking it off with what would be considered a pretty light meeting. And thank you for the opportunity. At our last meeting, I presented on the Rancho Santa Fe interchange and road project, and so Vice Mayor had asked about where Kingman Crossing was as far as the TI for that. And so I've got a very brief update for you. No slides tonight, there's really not any slides to show you. Just as kind of a history or reminder, Kingman Crossing Development Agreement was signed with KX Ventures back in 2019. That project was moving forward, and then March of 2020, there was declared national emergency by the president that was followed by a letter from KX Ventures, basically calling a timeout to the project because, of course, the development agreement allowed that. They didn't really know, as we didn't know, what would happen with retail development, and so they pushed pause on the agreement. Fast forward to 2021, several meetings with KX Ventures and their partner, KRC, the hospital CEO, and it was clear that they were ready to move forward. And so in 2021, they re-hired, or I guess, I say that they contracted back with AECom to relook and start the design of the TI again. When the pause button was pushed, they, we had 20%, or I'm sorry, 30% plans in place for the TI. And in relooking at the new standards for traffic interchanges on federal highways, it was determined that it was going to be faster, cheaper, to just redo the design from scratch. So the hospital and KX Ventures has hired AECom to do the design work for the TI, and they're, they have met several times along with my team, with ADOT, just to make sure that they're headed in the right direction. So right now, we're waiting for 30% design of the TI, which is being, we expect to have that anytime now, to see that. That will be submitted to ADOT, just not really for anything more than just to make sure that they're on the right path. And so in recent conversations with the hospital CEO, Will McConnell, they're hoping to be at 95% complete plans by October of 2022, or thereabouts. So, you know, those things are obviously ultimately up to ADOT. And so we're hoping that in late fall, we will have plans approved by ADOT to move forward. So Kingman Crossing could be out to bid as early as January 2023, and that's kind of where we are with Kingman Crossing.
Okay. Thank you, Manager Foggan. That's actually all good news, that it's...
I think so, yeah.
It's starting to gain steam again.
Obviously, you know, I know Mr. McConnell would love to see the plans already done or done within six months, but they're committed to being really aggressive with the plans and their plans submitted, and trying to answer any ADOT questions that come up as part of those so that they can turn it around as quickly as possible, because they are anxious to move their commercial development forward as quickly as possible.
Okay. Any comments from council members?
This is Jen. I just want to echo your comments, Vice Mayor. This is very good news, and I'm hoping that they will also, as planned, be pursuing the development of the retail that's going to occupy that great space that's going to be opened up when that interchange is built, because that is, I know all the people in the community are really looking forward to expanded commercial retail businesses there. Thank you, and thank you for all the work.
Yeah, I would say, just to that comment, Mayor, that my economic development team, along with KX Ventures, are actively marketing the property and, obviously, to be able to move forward, having a couple of anchor tenants on that space will be necessary to go to construction. And I know that we have been talking to people, and I know KX Ventures is actively looking to sign people for those prime spots.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Hearing none. Item B, code services, process, and authority.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This was a request from several meetings ago from Counselor Staley. I've asked Chief Cooper and his team to put together some information. This is something that I think every, I don't know, maybe six months comes around as people think that we're doing too much code enforcement or not enough. It's kind of one of those, I've always said that code services and code enforcement is probably one of the most difficult things that the city does or is involved with, and so we're always happy to bring the information and remind people of what, kind of what the rules are and what our part really is in enforcing and applying those rules. So Chief Cooper, welcome.
Thank you, City Manager.
Chief Cooper, welcome.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this, and I know the source and what was brought up at that meeting about a month ago, where there were some public comments made that had some question or concerns about issues going on, and the city manager is very correct that sometimes it's too much, sometimes it's not enough. It depends on if you're the person being told to fix their property or clean up the blight, or if you're a neighbor right next door to that client, or if you're someone in the neighborhood. And I know you, as counselors, receive comments from, questions from people all the time, so I do appreciate the opportunity to do this and explain to you what we do and how we enforce, not to rehash what our neighborhood service unit is, I think we did that previously, but the heart and the intent behind our enforcement efforts. So neighborhood services, they do handle a multitude of city code violations, primarily blight, nuisance, quality of life issues that are specific to often junk and debris vehicles, RVs, and they also handle animal control. So it's kind of about 50% both. There's also some other police services that they do in supporting as far as traffic control on occasion. They handle about 3,000 calls every year. I currently have four full-time neighborhood service positions. I actually have two right now. Two have recently resigned and/or retired, so we're looking, we're hiring, if you know anybody. Mostly, they are complaint-driven. I'd say I'm guesstimating about 60% complaint-driven, so if we get a complaint, we respond and we investigate all of the complaints, and our goal is to gain voluntary compliance. And there's a 30-day window that's built into that. Sometimes that 30 days can seem like forever, especially if it's in a neighborhood where the complainant is living. And there are times where that 30 days can extend. If we see that there is improvement being made and there's a complexity or severity of the blight, we will often allow them more time, because pushing through a criminal charge or a citation isn't really going to help the situation, it's just going to make it worse, and they're making progress. So there is a human element, oftentimes discretion. My officers, my police officers, as well as my neighborhood service officers, are expected to use discretion, common sense. A human element needs to be factored in there as long as the situation's getting taken care of, if it is determined to be a violation. I like the, I don't say like, we do, 60% of ours are complaint-driven, and I like that to the degree of when an officer goes into a neighborhood and contacts somebody that could be in a violation, they have the ability to say, "A complaint has been received," and we don't reveal who the complaint's from necessarily, but that gives my officer a position to be in there, right? Or gives them a reason to be there. So they will investigate that complaint, and if it's a violation, they will issue a correction notice. They'll also investigate or open cases on anything in that block, right? And there are times where officers generate their own activity because they know, or perhaps it's a zero tolerance issue, or we know it's an ongoing issue, and they'll initiate the call. And some of the things that we deal with on that is people will say, "Well, what about this guy? What about that guy? What about this person on the other side of town?" And obviously, we receive that. I can understand the reason why they're saying those things, but we're limited on resources as well, and so we always are prioritizing our response, so. Again, the officers do have discretion. I want them to look at the totality of the circumstance. I want them to weigh out, you know, there are, people have property and people have an expectation to kind of do what they want on their property, but we also know that we live in a city with codes and rules and regulations for quality of life issues, and we also try to be real sensible on how we apply that. Some require immediate, if it's a safety violation, requires immediate, we'll do that, and we have done that. But I am proud of our clearance rate. We average close to 90% every year on voluntary compliance on the cases that are open. There are times when somebody in the community has a different opinion on the meaning or their interpretation of a code. We work very closely with the city attorney's office on understanding the definition and how to actually apply it in the spirit that it's intended, and sometimes someone wants to be real specific, or, and we'll push back on that because that's not the intent of that. And so there's sometimes where there is some conflict or disagreements, but we also hope that if someone is not happy with how the law was applied or the code was applied, I would ask them to contact, not me directly, but I mean, contact our office and ask to speak to a supervisor. If they don't feel that the explanation is satisfied from the code enforcement officer, they can contact someone in my office and ask to speak to a supervisor. And I know you guys get questions often from people, and as always, if you don't have the answer, ask them or direct them to let me know, but ask them or, you know, encourage them to contact somebody in my office that can take care of the situation before it gets too out of hand. There are situations where I expect there to be zero tolerance. We talked about it before, shopping carts, trash, receptacles, appliances, you know, old tires, they are expected to take care of those things right away. There could be some parking violations where they know this is a hazard, it's a site obstruction, they need to be taking action right away. There's other situations, and they're very responsive to that. No complaints are ignored. If we receive a complaint, we open a case and it's handled. May not be handled to everybody's satisfaction because it's open to interpretation sometimes, but it is, it is handled. And I don't know, that's, I know it was brought up before, there are certain things that we ignore, but we don't necessarily ignore them, but I am limited with staffing, right? We've got a pretty large city, we can all drive around. I can drive around right now in three blocks, and I can see some violations. That's where if we get a complaint from someone in the neighborhood, then we'll take action on that. But if there's a neighborhood where everybody in that neighborhood isn't necessarily upset with the situation and it's not a hazard, we don't look at it as hard as we would if we get a complaint in another area, and that keeps us busy with the staffing that we currently have. So again, we currently, I currently have two that are active, and we're looking for two more. The one we're full-staffing, there's four of us. Going to that next item, just real quick, in regards to the dead animals, that's also part of this. We do, we do handle picking up dead animals on the roadway, so. Any questions at all?
I would just add, and I appreciate what the chief has shared, I just, for our part in it, I would say that the thing that people have the hardest time understanding, and I just want to reemphasize what the chief said, and that is, folks have a timeframe in which to work in, and that's what most people don't understand, is that they make their complaint through either a phone call or the report, a concern to the police department, and because I made that complaint, it's going to be fixed in the next five days. And I think that, that is not the way the process works, and we've had a number of cases where we've had a complaint, a case is open, it's being actively worked, and it goes past 30 days, and someone calls up and says, "Hey, you're not doing anything about this," and it's based on that, we're seeing progress. We do, you know, our goal is to use really great customer service with people that are in violation of the code, because I think that's, well, that's my expectation, and I think it's the council's expectation as well. But I would also say that there are situations where we need someone to use common sense, you know, an older citizen whose property has gotten so far out of line, and expecting that to be cleaned up in 30 days is not reasonable, but are we seeing progress? And so we, as I said before, code enforcement is probably one of the harder things that the city does. And the other thing is, I would like Carl just mention a few things about what his office is seeing on the code enforcement side, because there actually is another leg to this, and that's prosecution of it. So I'd just like Carl to speak to what he's seen from his office.
Sure thing. And just regarding that 30 days, that statute per statute, that we have to do that 30-day notice. So we have two tracks when it gets into my office. There's the criminal prosecution, which we sometimes, working with law enforcement, pursue just because it could be a repeat person, somebody who's just not complying with anything. But unfortunately, the criminal prosecution route can take about six months. So what happens is, if we go through that process, generally when we get to the final stages, you're looking for a conviction on the charge of basically a nuisance, and with that conviction or a plea agreement, you have that requirement to abate the nuisance. So what'll happen is, either you have a conviction or a change of plea on that plea agreement, there's going to be a timeframe to get into compliance again. So that's why we really look at the voluntary compliance, because that's just such a quicker process, but like I say, sometimes it goes through the criminal route. The other option we have is called a civil abatement, and that's an issue where we're not getting a response again from the person, but it's a quicker route. So what we do is we file a petition in the municipal court to abate the property. So we have to go in and prove our case to the judge, and the judge orders that abatement. So at that point, then law enforcement will basically hire a cleanup crew to go out on that property per the judge's order to clean and abate that property. Once we've done that, we do file, generally will file a lien on the property for the cost. We don't necessarily recover those liens, but they're there if we need to. I really think that's the big aspects of it. In my office, we've been trying to process those as quickly as possible, just because we know it's a council priority, and then, not unlike law enforcement with Chief Cooper's office being down, I was down to prosecutor for a while, so I only had one prosecutor handle all my criminal cases and our abatement cases. So things got slowed down a little bit in my office, but I am fully staffed now, so we're catching back up on those. But it's something that we make a priority in our office, and we work really closely with law enforcement, and I see those neighborhood services officers in our office weekly talking with our folks, just great coordination. So it's, I think we have a good team, and we do, I really believe we do a very good job with it.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Chief, I know, I've always, from past experience and having lived in the city now for almost 34 years, I've always noticed the city is fairly malevolent, what's the word, malevolent, about being patient, striving to work with people, and to get them to, you know, work through things and get their properties cleaned up. So I appreciate that patience, so.
Thank you.
Any comments from council members?
I have one, please, Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mayor.
Actually, Councilmember Nelson.
I'm sorry, Dina.
It's okay. It's the scratchy. It's the scratchy. My question is, does this apply to, this code enforcement apply to prohibited businesses in residential areas? I'm speaking of things like vehicle repair, or, actually, that's probably the biggest one that I see is the vehicle repair, but how does code enforcement work with that?
That would be the, this is Carl Cooper, the city attorney, addressing that. It would be the same, the same process. Either it's something that's noticed by law enforcement or there's a complaint, then we obviously have to review, you know, what's the appropriate zoning, if they have their business license, if it's something that's allowed in that property. And then that process goes, just like all the other nuisance complaints.
And that's one of those that can overlap with us and the other code division of the city?
Yeah.
And they do work very well on trying to figure out, and they tag-team. Sometimes it could be in an abated property or a blight property or doing a business, because we have had a few of those in the last month that I'm aware of.
Yeah, because some of those are impacted by zoning, which is not necessarily something that law enforcement always works on, they're more on the nuisance side, so the zoning, we talk to the P&amp;Z folks, then you have the business license aspect of it. So, but like I say, all the departments work really well with each other regarding this, and I think we have for as long as I've been here, 20 years.
Team effort.
Definitely, it is. It's a team effort.
I'm very, very happy that you guys work really well together on that. What I'm noticing is that we see code enforcement show up and have conversation, and then, or not even, I mean, we're not even talking 30 days, we're talking six months later, and there's still nothing changed. So what I see with that is that we're actually not prohibiting that business, so why do we have codes? If that's the case, why don't we just allow business owners to open their businesses up anywhere they want? Because, you know, I can immediately name two right off the top of my head that I see every day in my driving around town, and complaints have been given. So I'm frustrated when those citizens, neighbors come back to me and say, "Okay, nothing's being done." And actually, it's a legitimate question. Why do they get away with it, and why do the neighbors have to put up with it? I think that's a very fair question that we deserve an answer to, and our citizens deserve an answer to, and not just a, "Well, we're working on it," or, "They're showing improvement." No, they're not showing improvement. They're continuing to have cars delivered on their property, semi-trucks delivered on their property, tractors delivered on their property. And I just have all of these other citizens that are looking at me saying, "What, you guys can't do anything as city council?" And honestly, I feel a little like we can't. That's my question plus my frustration voiced. Thank you.
Chief, so I would want specifics, not now, but I would want specific address and location so that I can answer that question. So that would be my answer right now. I'm agreeing with you, but I would want to know the specifics, and I can ask my team what's going on and what's our status.
I will be sure to get those to you, because your team has been out there to visit with them on several occasions.
So Counselor Nelson, I'm aware of one of those issues, and I'm in total agreement, and I will certainly work with Chief Cooper and his team to try to focus in on that and see exactly what, what information we have, if we're missing something, definitely what we can do to relieve that frustration, because I know exactly one complaint that you're referring to, because I've received it as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from council members?
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Well, I'm just going to ask Chief about the deceased animal, since he brought that into this. One of the complaints that I've received several times, and Manager Foggan knows, is that people have said when they need a deceased cat removed from the roads or road sides that, and I don't know if it's true, but they say that they're told, "We don't pick up cats." And I know that technically we do, but when I hear the complaint process may not be as fast as people want, I wonder if there's any accommodation made for the fact that deceased animals probably need to be picked up pretty quickly.
So I know that we, if there's an animal deceased on the road or on the side of So I know that we, we, if there's an animal deceased on the road or on the side of the road, we as a city, whether it's us, parks, public works, I've confirmed it with all, we will pick that up. I know there was a time where somebody had called and they were told no, not too long ago. And we've identified that and figured that out and we've fixed that. We don't pick up deceased animals at somebody's house. They're directed to take them to the shelter or dispose of them on their own.
Right.
We don't pick up live cats. We do pick up animal or dogs, but we don't pick up live cats. So I don't know if there was any confusion there. But we do pick up dead animals on the road or on the shoulder of the road. So whether it's my code enforcement, neighborhood services, my police officers or public works and streets, we will respond to pick that up.
Thank you, thank you, Chief.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I also have a couple of questions. So some of the complaints that I'm getting, you know, and it sounds like we're all hearing complaints from our constituents about code enforcement. And I know this is a really important issue to our citizens. You know, in the last citizen survey, people talked about the importance of cleaning our city up. And so I'm certainly hearing the importance of that from people I know. But, so a couple of the things, like first I want to ask about the RVs that are parked on the street or in a front yard or on a driveway where they're not supposed to be. I, you know, I'm being told they call it in and months go by and they're still there. And so I'm wondering how long we give people to move their RV either to a storage facility or behind the gate?
So an RV can be on a driveway or in an area in their yard that's, you know, it's been created for parking. So that can happen. RVs can be on the street for a certain length of time. And I know there was something brought up too in regards to people living in an RV or living, people in the city can't be living, primarily living in their RV. And we've had a few and times where we've investigated it and we can't establish that they're actually living in the RV. They're saying that they're staying in there on occasion or getting away from the kids and things like that happen, so. But I would say for sure, if there is issues, it needs to be called in and someone wants, needs to make the report or make a complaint so that we can track it. Cause there's a lot of these things that if they're contacting you, but they haven't contacted us, it's really difficult for me to really give you an answer.
So on the RV, I, I thought that they had to be in a backyard, that they could not be, even if your front yard is level, you can't park your trailer there, right?
No, my understanding is that it can be in a driveway, it just can't be extending out into the roadway or blocking a sidewalk.
So it could be in someone's front yard, like where their landscape would be?
So there's a landscape element in there and there's some definite definition on the aggregate to make it where it's a parking area. And that's where I will say, right, that there is some, I think some discretion in that. If someone just has rock in their front yard and there's a trailer parked, to me, that could, that could go that direction where it's a, it's an area, they're not parking on their plant, their landscape, they're not parking on their, their boulders, so. But that's just a general term. I would ask again, just if there's a specific location that somebody to contact our office with that.
So if it's on the street, cause that's one, you know, just a few years ago, we made that law after that child was hit by a car and, and unfortunately killed. So I'm wondering how much time we give them to get that RV off the street?
So I don't know if there's a Title 28 statute there on the roadway that might change that.
We, in our city code, we put in seventy-two hours that a RV could park.
So will we tow it if they don't move it?
Well, towing's an option and I, and I'm just kind of giving you a, a dance answer here. But I, I do know, I don't know if our thirty day would apply to that if it's on the roadway. So that's a little different because it's on a roadway. There's, there's traffic laws that apply and that would make it more urgent as opposed to on somebody's property.
Okay. And then my other one, you, you just kind of touched on, but it's, you know, it's, I've heard from a few neighborhoods that people are putting a fifth wheel or an RV on their property and then they're renting that out. And they don't have hookups, they're not, you know, they're not in an area where, I don't know where you would be allowed to do that other than in an RV park, but it, it is a way of, of making money right now.
Well, that is a violation. So again, if there's a place where that's happening, I know there's been a few where we've looked at them recently and we couldn't establish that they were actually living in it. But they were warned, but if there's issues of that, they need to contact our office so that we can open up a case and at least we've documented it.
How, how many complaints would they have to make, you know, for somebody? I don't know. How would you ever prove that they're living in there if you're saying that's the issue? I, I don't want to pound you on this, but I have.
It's very subjective. It's very, this is very subjective. And this is one of those topics that's very hard for us to take enforcement action and actually criminally charge somebody when we can't. If I'm going to charge, one of my officers is going to charge somebody, it needs to be a solid case. It needs to be based on solid criminal foundation, based on the code, so that it's, you know, so when it goes to court, these same questions are going to be brought up. And some of them are, are, we haven't been able to clearly establish and come up with, I'll call it probable cause. But that would apply to this as well.
Okay.
Jamie, I have just something I'd like to add on to that then. Isn't an ordinance a law? And didn't we pass those laws? So if we did that, this is criminal activity, correct? I apologize, Jamie, for interrupting. Please forgive me for that. I just needed to throw that question right, but you're.
No problem.
I, if it's okay, I can jump in on that. An ordinance is a law and people can be charged with violating the law. But to be, we have to have a reasonable likelihood of conviction and you have to have the evidence to prove the case. If there is, the, the evidence is lacking, we can't prove the case, we can't charge somebody. So that's the aspect where this issue comes up is sometimes it's difficult to prove a case unless you have some really good evidence that will support it. And that's, unfortunately, that's the problem with some of these.
So I guess I would just end this with, you know, you can imagine how this could turn into the next container gate, right? You start having people, it, it's a trend. They start putting a couple of cheap fifth wheels on the property and then they've got all these people living there and it's going to snowball. And how are we ever going to get our arms around it? And, you know, especially when these things don't, they're not hooked up to sewer. They have an extension cord to the house. It's basically, you know, a slumlord and they could pop up in any neighborhood. They could be living next door to anybody tomorrow. That's a problem.
Agreed.
Councilmember Staley, I appreciate the comments. I know as you were talking about that, I was thinking, I've heard people doing that with, and trying to do it as an Airbnb, you know, use their fifth wheel and renting it out for a sleeping space. So I have heard that issue happening too. So I appreciate all the discussion and bringing all these items to, forward so that, you know, we can be more educated on it and so that the public also has a better understanding of the ordinances, of the laws and, and how we need to obey them. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay.
Vice Mayor, I, I just, I just would just put in, just a, a parting comment is that the ordinances are there and they give us the ability to do the enforcement that the council wants. Part of ordinance and policy execution for, for the team, for my team, is resource, the resources available. And so I would just comment to Councilor Staley and to the council as a whole that if we get a complaint and we had multiple RVs pulled onto a property, which is, there, there's a limit to the number of RVs, that if it became, if it was blight, if it, if it was clear that there was ten cars parked there, they couldn't park them legally, this, that would be an opportunity to, to chase a case much, much stronger than, hey, I've got a, a kid living in a fifth wheel on the side of the house. And it's, hey, we kicked him out for a week because he was naughty or, you know, whatever the case may be, right? So it does really boil down to resource allocation and not, we're, we're certainly, I guess the message is we're not ignoring, nor do we want to ignore the policies and, and processes passed by the city council. But it, as Chief Cooper indicated, it does become a, a pick and choose on priority. I, I always use the, there's good, better and best. And in some, in law enforcement, there's ordinances where they're enforceable, they're convictable and they're, or they're prosecuted or they're, and they're, we have the ability to convict. And based on the resource, the resources that we're granted gives us the opportunity to be able to pursue these in a, you know, if, if we had, you know, I double the code enforcement team, I still don't know that we could chase down people living in RVs on, on side yards or in backyards. Not saying that we don't want to, but just building a strong case would require time and energy that could probably be better spent on getting RVs out of streets or getting properties cleaned up or all, you know, taking care of animal complaints that we get quite regularly as well. So I mean, it's, it really becomes a juggling act where we want to do our best and, you know, business, illegal businesses in neighborhoods. I'm all about the impact that that has on the neighborhood. The reminder that I would make to the council is, are you prepared to have that business come in and complain or call you and say, don't you want the sales tax that I generate? Because that's the other, that's the flip side of that coin. And, and again, we're trying to do best, the best with the resources we have to tackle these issues. And I, I, I hear exactly the frustration, I get them too. As well as I know Chief Cooper and Carl Cooper are getting those complaints. And, and we, you have my commitment that we're going to do the best we can with the resources we have. Is, is someone going to slip between the cracks on these things? Yes, if it's a minor case, there is a chance that we will be concentrating on more, on stronger, easier, not easier, I shouldn't say, because some of these might be really easy. But stronger cases that, that we can get compliance with. So just as a, as a parting thought.
Okay, thank you. Well, and it's human nature for us all, we all like to complain. But I think if, as Chief Cooper mentioned, if we don't follow through on those feelings that we're complaining and report it, so that something can be, you know, at least it, so it gets documented with code enforcement to start with. That's the most important thing that we follow through and, you know, these activities. Okay, any other comments then? I think we're done. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you covering those items. Moving on to item six on the agenda, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. I guess Manager Foggan, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have one item for you and that is just to remind you that we have the year-to-date financial recap and our look forward work session. It's kind of our, our annual budget kickoff meeting. And that is coming up next week, January twelfth, four PM. That will be a hybrid meeting for those that are planning on attending in person. We will be in this room and I believe the link to the meeting has already been sent out, went out today. So that's just a reminder that something that Tina and I are working on and look forward to, to share with kind of how twenty, our fiscal year 2022 is going and what the next five years for, our forecast and, and both on revenue and expenditures is, is looking like. So just that reminder, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Okay, Councilman Walker, do you have any comments?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Nelson?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Staley?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Semeli?
I have nothing, thank you.
I have nothing to add tonight. Mayor, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, council request number, item number seven for future reports and updates. Do I hear anything? Okay. It's going to be a quiet night tonight. Then I move, well, I'd like to have a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, good night.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.